Well, everybody, apparently I misspoke. They're going to set up the boards a little bit later so we can call to order this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. It is March 9th. The time is 7:34. Clerk, could you take the roll?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President Healy.
Here.
Councilwoman Clough.
Here.
Councilwoman McAtee.
Here.
Councilman Beale.
Here.
All members present.
Great, thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is, as always, is the Pledge to the Flag. This evening, I'd like to invite India and Abby up to lead us in the pledge we'll be recognizing later on in the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd entertain a motion to move up item 13A, B, and C on the agenda.
I second.
So moved.
All right, all in favor of?
Aye.
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 So this is new business, item A, and we have a few proclamations regarding Girl Scout Week, which is March 8th through March 14th, 2015. And it reads, "Whereas Thursday, March 12th, 2015 marks the 103rd anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA, founded by Juliette Gordon-Low in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas though Girl Scouting, girls grow encourage, through Girl Scouting, girls grow encourage, confidence, and character, and learn to make the world a better place. And whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouts, the preeminent organization for girls, has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of character, conduct, and patriotism. And whereas Girl Scouting takes an active role in increasing the interest and skill levels of today's youth in math, science, and technology careers, and to fulfill our country's economic needs. And whereas through participation in Project Undercover, a council-wide community service project, every girl will learn that she can make a change for the better in her community. And whereas the Girl Scout Cookie Sale is the world's largest girl-led business, teaching financial literacy to girls of all ages. Whereas the Girl Scouts of southeastern New England, which serves 12,000 girls in the Rhode Island area, will be celebrating 103 years of an American tradition with more than 3.4 million current Girl Scout members nationwide. Now therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of South Kingstown, do hereby proclaim the week of March 8th through 14th, 2015, as Girl Scout Week in the Town of South Kingstown, and urge our citizens to support Girl Scouts in their endeavors." Witness my hand and the official seal of the Town of South Kingstown. This does not constitute bribery.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much. Thanks a lot. That's the great need for the cookies.
Do I hear a motion?
You.
Thank you, thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve item 13A for the resolution for Girl Scout Week being held March 8th through 14th, and that we proclaim this through the Town Council here at South Kingstown.
Second.
So moved. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations to the Girl Scouts. I have a proclamation that can go to perhaps the leader. But on to item B, which is a resolution adopting a proclamation recognizing India Aikenhead for attaining the Girl Scout Gold Award as follows. Oh yeah, please come up and receive. No, we'll embarrass you by reading this long thing. "Whereas India Aikenhead has devoted her time and her energy to complete the requirements of and participate in such a worthwhile organization as the Girl Scouts of the United States of America. And whereas she has met the challenges of the Girl Scout program and developed her courage, confidence, and character, she has demonstrated self-discipline, time-management skills, originality, and initiative. And whereas she has practiced daily the ideals of Girl Scouting and discovered her own values, knowledge, and skills to explore the world, connected with her community locally and globally, and has taken action to make the world a better place. And whereas India's project entitled Going Gluten-Free promoted celiac disease awareness and nutritional gluten-free eating through a community cooking demonstration, and the creation of an informational brochure, complete with original recipes. And whereas she has earned the highest honor in Girl Scouting by achieving the Gold Award, bringing pride to herself, and honor to her Ambassador Girl Scout Troop Number 113, her family, and to her community, may this be a preview of her future dedication to a purpose and service to pursue until she accomplishes the goals that she is seeking. Now therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of South Kingstown, do hereby extend our congratulations for a job well done, and best wishes for success in all future endeavors."
I make a motion to approve item 13B with great honor. Job well done.
Second.
So moved. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations again, thank you. Item C is a resolution adopting a proclamation recognizing Abigail Herbert for attaining the Girl Scout Gold Award as follows. "Whereas Abigail Herbert has devoted her time and her energy to complete the requirements of and participate in such a worthwhile organization as the Girl Scouts of the United States of America. And whereas she has met the challenges of the Girl Scout program and developed her courage, confidence, and character, she has demonstrated self-discipline, time-management skills, originality, and initiative. And whereas she has practiced daily the ideals of Girl Scouting and discovered her own values, knowledge, and skills to explore the world, connected with her community locally and globally, and has taken action to make the world a better place. And whereas Abigail's project entitled Mapping the Trails of Old Mountain Field involves constructing a kiosk for South Kingstown Parks and Recreation Department, and also mapping the hiking trails of Old Mountain Field. And whereas she has earned the highest honor in Girl Scouting by achieving the Gold Award, bringing pride to herself, and honor to her Ambassador Girl Scout Troop Number 113, her family, and to her community, may this be a preview of her future dedication to a purpose and service to pursue until she accomplishes the goal that she is seeking. Now therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of South Kingstown, do hereby extend our congratulations for a job well done, and best wishes for success in all future endeavors." Do I hear a motion?
I proudly make a motion for the second time on item 13C for Abigail Herbert. We are very proud of your accomplishments.
Second.
So moved. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations. You don't have to sit around for the rest of our evening, but please do. There's lots of interesting things to be talked about.
Thank you for the cookies.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Bye Pam. Bye.
Item four on our agenda is the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
I move that we approve item 4A from the work session of February 17th. However, I would like to make an amendment to the minutes from February 23rd.
I don't know if you want to approve the 17th first, or you want to do?
Yeah, separate them.
Is that the regular session minutes?
These are the work session.
Oh, okay.
Oh, actually, work session's February, no, it's work session, February 23rd. So I make a motion that we approve February 17th at this point in time on the work session.
Second.
So moved. All in favor approving the minutes for February 17th?
Aye.
Aye. And I would like to amend the work session minutes from February 3rd, noting page 5, I-9, and the one point is, the comments from interested citizens under section number nine, I just wanted to reiterate that there was, the name was incorrect. Matt Mason was listed as talking about the Ocean State Waves. His name is actually Matt Finlayson, F-I-N-L-A-Y-S-O-N. So I'd like to just make that correction.
Is that the regular session?
Actually, that did go into the regular session.
What's the work session?
It's the regular session.
Yes, I'm sorry. It said work session, they were all stapled together, so I apologize. So if we want to approve, continue to approve the February 23rd, 2015 work session, and then I would make the amendment for item number B.
Motion to approve February 22nd work session minutes.
February 23rd.
February 23rd.
February 23rd, work session minutes.
Second.
So moved. All in favor of approving the minutes for the February 23rd work session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then item B would be the amendment, page 5, item number 9, in terms of the correction on the name change.
Do you approve that? Move to approve as amended?
I would move to approve as amended, so moved.
Second.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Which brings us to item, consent agenda, sorry.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
So moved. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Say aye.
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 It's unanimous. Item six on our agenda is licenses. And letter A is a resolution granting a victualling license to Comfort Cuisine, Inc., doing business as Mia's Kitchen, 99 Fortin Road, number 108, in Kingston. Subject to approval by the Fire Chief and Communication Superintendent. Application by Mia Rao, 9 Gray Coach East, Cranston, Rhode Island. Is Mia here? Hi Mia. Excuse me if I pronounced your name wrong.
Oh, it's Rao, but oh, it's okay.
So tell us a little bit about Mia's Kitchen.
So we took over the Burger Shack and the U-Melt restaurants that were located at the URI Emporium. We took them over in January 1st, and we're going with a slightly different concept, basically changing the decor, the menu, just trying to set it up to it's more of a comfortable place for the students and for the neighborhood, so that we can attract the surrounding neighborhood as well. It's a healthier alternative, it's fresher foods than what they're accustomed to there. We've got a salad bar, and it's just, we're trying to bring to them just a healthier environment, altogether between the food and the atmosphere.
Great. Any questions?
What will be your hours of operation there?
Right now, we're operating from 8:00 AM until 7:00 PM. So we might deviate a little bit, I mean, right now with the winter, it was a little bit cooler, so the traffic wasn't there, so we kind of shut it down a little bit earlier. I mean, I suspect that it might go from 7:00 AM, depending on how the breakfast business takes off, until 9 o'clock at the latest. I can't imagine it being open any later than that.
Seven days a week?
Unfortunately.
I move approval of new license A.
Second.
So moved. All in favor of?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Congratulations, good luck.
Love to see you there someday.
Good luck, yeah.
Item B under licenses is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the Crazy Coyote Chase on Saturday, April 11th, 2015, at 9:00 AM to the Broad Rock Middle School, PTO, 351 Broad Rock Road, Wakefield. Subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event and the amount specified by the risk manager, and any conditions of approval set by the Transportation and Traffic Review Committee. Application by Molly Rodriguez, Race Director, 3561 Post Road. Is Molly here?
Hi.
How are you?
Good, thanks, how are you?
Thanks. Tell us about the Crazy Coyote Chase.
This is the third annual, and we are in planning stages now. And we were granted approval by the Police Department, and so now, we had switched it, I was here a couple of weeks ago. We have the support of a trail race planner. He's one of the dads at Broad Rock right now, Mike Galub, and he's going to help time the race this year, which is good, we don't have to pay for that. And it's a very successful and fun fundraiser for the school. We were able to earn, we netted about 8,000, a little bit more than 8,000 last year, and we hope to do the same this year. The money goes towards leveled libraries for the classrooms, the technology fund, a variety of other expenses that offset the school's budget, so.
Great. Any questions?
How many runners do you typically have in your race?
We estimate about 200. That's combined with both the one-mile fun run and the 5K.
Have you in the past notified the people along the race route? I know that's something that's come up.
Yes, we have, we have a flyer that we put, not in mailboxes, but either on, like, between the wall and the mailbox, or between the flag and the, yeah. So we, yes, we go around the neighborhood and put those.
One of the other things we had discussed in the work session was doing a follow-up after a race. Would you be comfortable coming back and telling us how? It's just good feedback for us to see what went right, what went wrong.
We have to create a report for the, for the insurance company, the USA TAF, so, yeah, so that's.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Do you have any particular questions that you want answered for that report?
It's just good to know if you, what feedback you get, anything that, you know, out of the ordinary, good or bad, any complaints you might have heard, how many runners, how much money you made, where it goes, just so that we can start creating, you know, our information here.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Okay.
And what's the application fee for, to sign up for the race?
$20.
Oh, good.
Well, now, do you want, I have a registration form in my bag.
Sure, I've walked in that race before, so.
Okay, good.
It's a great race.
Sure.
I like your new route, I think it's, it'll be good.
Great.
But I think one of the things we're concerned with is just giving the community notification, so if you can take care of that.
Yep.
That'd be great.
Okay, and we also plan on putting up signs at the main entries, that's what we did last year.
You can even put it up on the?
The marquee.
The marquee.
Yeah, we did that too.
Yeah. Very good.
All right, so do I hear a motion on item B?
I make a motion that we approve item 6B for the Crazy Coyote Chase on Saturday, April 11th, at 9:00 AM at the Broad Rock Middle School, PTO, 351 Broad Rock Road in Wakefield. Subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event in the amount specified by the risk manager, and any conditions of approval set by the Transportation and Traffic Review Committee.
Second.
So moved. All in favor of approving the Crazy Coyote Chase permit?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, good luck. Item C is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the 28th Narrow River Road Race on Saturday, May 9th, 2015, at 10:00 AM to the Narrow River Preservation Association, Saunders Town, Rhode Island. Subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event in the amount specified by the risk manager, and any conditions of approval set by the Transportation and Traffic Review Committee. Application by David Smith, Program Coordinator. Is David here?
And yes, I did bring applications to you.
So tell us about the Narrow River Preservation Association race.
Well, this is the, will be the 28th running of the race, and except for the years when Middle Bridge was being reconstructed, it is typically, the 10K event starts in Narragansett Beach, runs to Treaty Rock Park, Middle Bridge Road, and then returns to Narragansett Beach. A 5K event, they have a 5K run and a 5K walk, starts simultaneous with the 10K, starts at Treaty Rock Park and finishes at Narragansett Beach. We have approximately 250 runners, walkers, each year, and the proceeds from the race go towards reimbursing URI Watershed Watch for testing services, which we provide testing on the river at 14 locations, and also a scholarship program. Last year, we awarded four $1,000 scholarships to seniors graduating from the high schools in the watershed. So it's a great event. It's not only a fundraiser, but it's also an attempt on our part to get people to, exposed to the river and to the wonderful views, and promote recreation along the river. Do you have any questions?
What's, what is the registration fee?
Registration fee is $25.
And like I said with the other one, do you notify the people along the race route? Are you going?
Many of them are participants in that.
Yeah.
Yes, well, we have a, we have a newsletter to the, all the residents in the watershed, and during the, in the summer months, it goes to everybody, and then to our membership.
Right.
But explicitly, mail drop to every house, no.
Maybe like signage, though.
Pardon?
Signs put up at all?
Yeah, there's signage in the morning of the race, and volunteers are along the way.
Right. I think one of the things we had talked about is maybe putting that signage up to give people a heads up that the race is going to be happening, you know, the following week or something. Just, just a few signs along the race route, so people along the area are aware.
That we could do.
And as I said, certainly maybe a follow-up as to how you, how your race was.
We also have to make our report to USA in track and field, and, but we can also do a survey to, to the residents of Middle Bridge Road and the adjoining roads.
That'd be excellent. So what's the water quality like on the Narrow River these days? Don't know?
It's great to swim in, it's good to finfish. DEM says not to shellfish there, and I'm not going to advise that, but, because there are certain sections where there are still some, there are still some problems with the water quality.
Anybody have any questions about the race?
Well, I'd just like to state that both this race, the Narrow River Preservation Race, and the Broad Rock Middle School Race, that we have received no complaints on either one of these races. So I just want to make that clear to everybody, that we have not had one resident or, at least come to our attention here at the Town Council table, so I'd just like to say that. So it's been running pretty smoothly for many years, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve licenses 6C.
Second.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations, I wish you luck. Item?
Have a good race.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 6D is a resolution granting, miscellaneous permit to conduct the Crabman Triathlon on Sunday, July 26th, 2015, at 6:30 AM to Trimom Productions LLC, Camp Fuller Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event in the amount specified by the risk manager. Write-out approval, Rhode Island Department of Transportation approval, and conditions of approval set by the Transportation and Traffic Review Committee. Application by Kathy Robbins, Managing Member. Kathy, are you here? Good evening.
Oh, did you have any questions about the event? I know you do.
Yeah, please give an overview of Crabman and?
Well, sure, Crabman is going to be different this year. The last three months, I have, this is my fifth meeting about the Crabman, and I have taken all of the comments from everybody, from the town, from the police, from the businesses, and certainly from the racers, and I have taken it, and I have dissected it to the minutest amount, because it certainly affects me on every level to have been put in a position, sort of just really not knowing that there was this, there were some problems out there. So I took everything that everybody said to heart, really thought about it, and working with the police have completely changed the course for the Crabman to, so there will actually be no traffic running at all south of the beach. So when you think about the Crabman, the swim is at the beach, obviously, and then the bike, which was once a two-loop bike that would more condense the athletes, has now been expanded to a 13-mile loop that really spreads the athletes out, and they're going to go into Charlestown up route once. Now we just have this single loop, and they're not going to go back down Cards Pond, so there's no reason to shut any lanes down at all. We don't shut them down, by mean to bring it down to one lane of traffic south of the beach at all, because the bikers are simply going to be turning into the beach. The only thing I can think of is that there would probably be an officer at that Cards Pond, Mattoonik Beach Road, only for cars, and you don't even really need it because as the athletes are going straight, if somebody was trying to turn. But again, that's normal every day. If you're a car trying to make a right, you would certainly look to see if somebody was there. But that's the only place I can see where normally we would have a few officers out there, shutting it down to one lane of traffic. You know, in the past, we were, we were out there yesterday, really working, the police were incredible, working, you know, we've always deemed to really keep the traffic flowing all morning long. So yesterday, we thought, you know, we were out taking pictures, we were out in front of the businesses, making sure that everybody was getting really where they need to be, and that always translates, has always translated to us, to the Crabman as well. The run course, which was the, causing some of the issues, is not going out of the beach at all, it's going out Cards Pond, I call it the grassy, the big field outside of Blackberry Hill. And the run would now go through, just up through Blackberry, quickly over to Mattoonik Schoolhouse, down Moonstone, Cards Pond. The runners will be on the correct side of the road, they're just going to turn back down the field. They're, in triathlon, they're so spaced out at that point, because again, they are swimming, then they're biking, and then they're getting to the run. So it's really, by that point, they're just really spread out. So while I've taken to heart, and I've gone over all the times that I've tried to communicate with the business, I really, I have, you've really made me just go back over the last eight years and think about all of these things about this event, and I, whatever happens tonight, I am so incredibly proud of the job that I have done, in the community, with the athletes, with the businesses, not just in Mattoonik, but all around South Kingstown. So this year, the complaints that I have heard are completely not an impact at all. So this year, the complaints that I have heard are completely not an impact at all anymore. We are not going south of the beach. We are cleared everywhere, primarily by seven forty-five, by eight a.m. You know, you do have a couple of tail-end athletes. It's a very, very small portion. So I have listened, I've been flexible, I've worked with the chief and the town, so we're happy with the way the new course came out.
Thank you, Kathy. Questions for the applicant?
How many police officers have you hired for that race in the past?
Seven.
And do you hire harbor patrol at all, or?
We do, yep. We have the patrol, we have fire and rescue out in the beach. I mean, we really employ everybody in town for that race.
So you, Trimon pays the harbor patrol, then?
I pay everybody, yep. I pay everybody. So, and I know you're going to ask me about notification, you know, the town, that we put out a billboard out in front of the beach as soon as the beach opens, which is usually last week in June. So it's pretty much six weeks that there is a sign out there. And then I do go out in the neighborhood the week before and put the signs out as well. So, you know, again, I thought about what else that we could do, you know, all calls, something in the paper, you know, there's lots of other things that probably can be addressed, you know, but I haven't just gone out there and done the race. I mean, it's certainly been, you know, for at least six weeks before that there, that that race is coming. And eight years has always been on the same weekend, so.
I happened to be in Mattoonik yesterday and had an opportunity to speak with the business owners there, and they really don't feel that you've reached out to them.
Well, that's not true. We have tried to set up a meeting on a number of occasions, and we just haven't been able to get together, so.
I, I just happen to be there, and they're very easy to find, they're in the businesses all day long.
Well, we were going to have one meeting together with all the business owners, and we've tried, I mean, I'll be happy to show you my Facebook messages back and forth with them.
I see them, trust me.
Yeah. No, no, with the, with Bob Fox from the Surf Shop, who's leading the conversation between myself and the business members. And we have tried to get together. It just hasn't worked out. In the meantime, I said to Bob, I look forward to when you get back from vacation, just let everybody know that I have changed the course, and we can talk about it when you come back, but I want you to know, going into the next meeting, that I've already altered the course. So that issue that you have of me going down there is not an issue anymore. So I've been very proactive, Rachel. I have tried to sit down with these guys, and they with me as well. It just hasn't worked, I mean, everybody's super busy, so.
Well, I certainly did see on Facebook that you offered free beer at the Ratskeller in Charleston for everybody, and you pulled them all out of Mattoonik, which I thought, that's an interesting take, not very supportive of Mattoonik business owners.
Not true, Rachel, because, and you know what? I, again, you've made me think about all of these things.
I hope so.
In two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven, I had my post-race party for the Oceans Run at the Mist. I, I loved it. And I have two, and I'll, I'll forward you the emails. On July twenty-fifth and July twenty-sixth, I communicated with the Ocean Mist because they said to me they didn't want to have the post-race party for the Oceans Run at the Mist anymore. I, I think you can gather that anything like that hits me like a ton of bricks because to me, it's great for the community, they're all walking down there, couldn't understand if something had happened. I tried on July twenty-fifth, I tried on July twenty-sixth, and I was reminded yesterday by both Sue Rossi and another family that we went to the Mist on two separate occasions with people that were friendly with Kevin, that knew how upset that I was, and we tried to talk to him, to tell, let us know what did we do, is there something wrong?
I've never known Kevin to not want to talk.
But Rachel, but Rachel, again, you want, you.
Seen him a lot of times.
Then, once, but Rachel, but it's, but Rachel.
My concern, excuse me, Kathy, my concern.
I haven't finished my story.
My concern, I, I've heard it. My concern truly is you're infringing on their businesses in the middle of their season. I think they're all very happy and willing to compromise, and I think you need to be too. I think the compromise is to do the race off-season. That's the compromise I see.
Well, I, I think you need to, first of all, I've addressed the concerns, there's not going to be an issue anymore, but nobody here is addressing the, but I too am a small business owner in town. I too pay taxes in town. I too do a great service to the community, but that doesn't seem to matter. I'm not infringing. I sat in front of Sea View yesterday for fifteen minutes and counted twenty-eight people that walked out of Sea View Market from the Oceans Run, carrying bags, eating food. We were watching, Rachel, we were on high alert to make sure, we took a picture to make sure that the mist was.
You passed out food during the race, though. You had tents that passed out food.
But Rachel, if you're watching the, I just, Rachel.
I was there. I mean, you know, Kathy, I appreciate it. I just think you need to be willing to compromise, too.
Rachel.
Let's see if there are comments and questions from the rest of the council.
Kathy, when is Mr. Fox coming back from vacation?
Um, I don't, I don't know.
Doesn't give you any idea?
He didn't, no. I just let him know that I had changed the course, it shouldn't be an issue, and I, we looked forward to meeting with him when, when the business owners, when he came back.
I mean, I'd like to make a suggestion that you meet, this meeting that you are just talking about with the business owners.
Yes.
If you could do this in the next two weeks, we have another regular session of the town council in two weeks, we could continue this so that you could work out the kinks with the business owners. Because, you know, what Rachel says is true, we're getting a lot of complaints from the four or five businesses that are down there in the area. So if you can work it out with them, that's what we want to see. So if you could have this meeting as soon as possible, I just don't know when Mr. Fox will be back. I mean, it's a suggestion.
I would echo those sentiments, Carol.
I don't want to negate any road races in town. We are healthy places by design. I think it's important that we continue with the road races. But I'd like to do it with tact and respect. And I just think, based on these emails that are coming through, I, I'm not happy. I, I try to respond to every single one, every person that sends something, and I would have to agree. You know what? Let's make it a positive, not a negative. Let's meet with Sea View Market and see if you can negotiate something with him in terms of, you know, your water situation, your water bottles, and, you know, give him a little bit of business, or have him provide protein bars. Then maybe some of it at the bubble, maybe not. And let's see if, you know, the roads are not going to be, you, you've done the right thing in changing the, the race configuration, so I applaud you for that. But let's see if we can gather the other businesses to make this positive, because nobody wants to see these races go away. I, for one, don't, and I don't think anybody on the council does either. I mean, we just approved two. We don't, we don't want to disapprove yours. I, I certainly don't, I, I have to be candid with you. But let's try to make the people down there a little bit more happy with what's going on because they're protective of that community, and it's difficult. And if it's your race, is it going to be the run for carry next, or the next one that's down there? None of us want to do that.
I think it's all compromise. I think everybody in this situation needs to be willing to compromise. And what I've heard of all the businesses, they would be, but just not on season, not in the middle of the summer. That's what I'm hearing. And, and I have a responsibility to state that.
I, I too am a seasonal business. I mean, I can't run triathlon.
Certainly can in September.
But I already have an event in September. I can't, there's, there's not enough weekends, there's not, I can't run multiple races. I mean, again, you, there, there, nobody is considering the impact on my business. And while I have been proactive, I've worked at the town, it's not a, none of those issues. My race starts at six thirty in the morning. It's done by eight o'clock in the morning. And you, what, guys want to sit, and, but no one's considering my business, or the, the impact that it would have to move my race to September would be devastating. That race is done. If you move it to September, and while you can agree with their impact, Rachel, you can't ever see my impact that it has on my business. I'm twenty thousand dollars into this race already with registrative people going. When you do that, you, you kill me. And again, I, I understand that's not your concern, but I too am a business owner. I too have done a tremendous thing for the community for next to nothing. This is not about the money for me. I was at the dump today for three hours. This is not about the money, it's about the athletes, it's about supporting the community. I'm trying to meet with them. There's no other way I can change the course. It's going to be great. I've already talked to everybody about it. When I go over it with them, it'll be such a less, I almost feel bad about moving the course because they won't, the visibility won't be there that they would see that people enjoy. But I, I have tried to reach out to them. It has not been a pleasant experience for me. I've been dragged through the newspaper, I've been personally attacked. I just want to put on great races that support the community and the athletes. So this has not, this has been a terrible experience, and, well, you say, should I, should I have?
That's a wonderful thing, but there's nothing that says that race can't be in September.
There, there is.
That's a compromise. You also need to be willing to compromise if they are.
That's not a compromise, that's a death sentence for the race. It's not a compromise, Rachel, absolutely.
There's a lot of triathlons.
Can I interject here? We had discussion at our work session. Nobody wants to harm any business, nobody wants to harm the businesses that are in Mattoonik. A couple of things we talked about was, at our work session, we talked about, when we left that work session, the impression was that because of your early planning, my impression was that we were going to approve races that were scheduled for this year. There's a little disagreement amongst the council here. So it sounds to me like you've done an awful lot of work to try to change things here. Out of the discussion came this compromise that maybe we can come back in two weeks. I don't know whether that changes anything for you. Again, my point of view is I think we left, in my opinion, we left that work session, that races that were scheduled for this year would be held primarily because of the investment they've made. Again, I don't want to hurt businesses in Mattoonik, but I don't want to hurt yours either.
I, I have to agree that, with that. I think your original application came up as a renewal. And as a renewal, I think it all was originally put on a consent agenda in the past and was approved. When this situation came up, it kind of changed things a little bit. And we ran into this last year with a race that we had last year, and the folks also put in a twenty thousand dollar investment. So it was agreed that the race would continue. However, we, we didn't have opposition at that point from business owners, and that's what we're trying to protect. I'm not saying that we want to cancel your race, that's the last thing I want to do, to be truthful with you. And I know, and I'm sure you work extremely hard. I know you do, because that's your passion. So I'd like to see a way to make it work, and I have to agree with Joe, but I would also like you to go back and work with Tara's and, you know, with the Ocean Mist and with Saber, and see if there's a way you guys can truthfully come to some type of an agreement to really make this work, and the gentleman at the Surf Shop. Because it's only going to be good quality media publicity for you. It's only going to be enhancing your continued road races. Nobody here is your enemy. We all want to be your best friends, but the bottom line is, sometimes you can't make everybody happy. All I would ask as a council member is that you work with your neighbors and see if you can convince them for everybody to make this a win-win situation, because you certainly do a good job.
Yeah, I appreciate the logistical challenges, or changes you've made to the, to the race course. I think that's a great start. I think that's in line with a lot of the complaints we've heard. I think what you're hearing from the council is that we just want to see that outreach and communication to the business community. It sounds like you began that, but it hasn't just quite gotten there yet. So if we could make the motion to continue it for a couple of weeks, in that time, you can either reach out to Mr. Fox representing the, the business owners, or if he's on vacation, reach out to, reach out to them individually, and then come back and.
If I can just interject here. If she reaches out and we're back here in the same spot, she still has a big investment. Again, I don't want to hurt the, the community businesses, but she still has a big investment. I don't know that, that we can, I don't want to use the word harm, but harm her by not.
I mean, I.
Well, if I could just say one thing, I mean, the businesses in Mattoonik have a huge investment also. And the summer on a Sunday is their high holy season, so to speak. This is when they make the bulk of their money on the weekends. We don't want to see them lose money, so, you know, we don't want to see you lose money or them lose money. Figure out a way for it to be a win-win for both of you, and, and I think this will go away. But it has to be a benefit. They can't be losing your race, you're winning and they're losing, that doesn't make sense. If they're losing money, then you need to address that. You need to maybe buy some gift certificates and give them out as prizes from these places. Buy your water from the Sea View Market, figure out something. But promote them. They're, it's, it's their home turf. They're there twenty-four seven, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. You have to appreciate that and then, and make up for the loss that they're experiencing.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, again, I, I've taken it to heart that it's the, you know, that you think that I don't realize that.
Well, meet with them. You need to meet with them, because we're hearing from them that they're not happy, that things aren't going well for them during your race. So figure out, they're all reasonable people down there. I mean, you could, I know you can sit down with them and figure out something. I can see several of them here tonight that probably want to speak.
I just think you had an opportunity yesterday, you had a race yesterday, you had an opportunity there to kind of turn it around, and then it was perfect timing. You could have come in here today and said, look, I had this race, it was great for Mattoonik, all the business owners in Mattoonik could have been here saying, you know what, that was a win-win. And instead, what we saw was you pulled them out. You, you had an after-party offering free beer somewhere else, which I love the Ratskeller personally, but it's not, why would the community of Mattoonik support you when you're pulling business away from them? And especially in the summer, they can't all, I mean, I heard from, from the Ocean Mist that they lose three to five thousand dollars on the morning of your race. That's not right. They're also a business, and they've invested a lot of money. So all the businesses down there are just as important. Yes, you have a business, and, and a very good one. It just can't infringe on theirs to this point. And that's what I go back to. It's all about compromise.
All right. What's the council? Should comments be given now or during comments from interested citizens?
Yeah, right now.
Right?
Okay.
If you want to speak to before you vote one way or the other.
All right. Any further questions for Kathy? All right, thank you, Kathy. At this time, we'll take discussion from members of the public who are here. And please direct comments towards the council and to other members of the audience. State your name. I'm going to try and keep everybody to three minutes tonight, just because it looks like we might have a lot of speakers. And proceed.
Good evening. For those who don't know me, I'm Dan Saber. I'm the owner of the Sea View Marketplace in Mattoonik. Crabman is pretty devastating to all our businesses in Mattoonik. Mine particularly, I'm down thirty-eight to forty percent that morning of the race. The, my employees have a hard time coming to work, and customers have a hard time coming to my store, and it just isn't right. As far as communications from Mrs. Robins to us, there has been zero. As far as items coming out of my store yesterday, probably has been ten cups of coffee at the most, and four batteries that one of her employees bought. And that's my position on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Members of the town council, my name is Barbara Sitter, and I'm a resident of North Kingstown, Rhode Island. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to address the town council this evening. My purpose for speaking to you this evening is to ask you to continue to allow Kathy Robbins to hold the Crabman Triathlon in July at South Kingstown Town Beach. I felt if I was going to address the town council, that was important, that I had a clear understanding of what South Kingstown was facing in two thousand and fifteen race season. This is what I found on the internet source running in the USA. There are approximately thirteen races scheduled for South Kingstown in two thousand and fifteen. Three of those races are held between Memorial Day and Labor Day. Two of those races, the Crabman and Run for Carry, are in Mattoonik. There are only two races in Mattoonik in the fifteen weekends from Memorial Day to Labor Day. In two thousand and fourteen, the Crabman Triathlon took approximately two and a half hours to complete from the time the first swimmer entered the water to when the last runner crossed the finish line. What does this mean in terms of businesses? I did some calculations, and I did my best to ensure the accuracy of the data that I used, and this is what I found. If we took the Sea View Market as an example, there are fifteen weekends from Memorial Day to Labor Day, with two days per weekend, and business hours from eleven a.m. to eight p.m., and those, I got off the internet this morning. They may be different in the summertime, but I'm going with what I have. If you calculate that out, there's two hundred and seventy weekend business hours from Memorial Day to Labor Day. If we look at the Crabman Triathlon, the time that the Crabman Triathlon takes, and divide that by. divide that by 270 business hours, and multiply that by 100 to put it into a percentage, what we get is that only 0.9% of the total weekend business hours from Memorial Day to Labor Day are impacted by the Crab Man Triathlon. For argument's sake, let's take the hours from 5:00 a.m. to noon, seven hours from when the first athletes start arriving. This still only accounts for 2.6% of the total weekend business hours from Memorial Day to Labor Day. If we do the same equation for the Ocean Mist, and we'll use the worst-case scenario of seven hours, it's only 1.5% of the Ocean Mist's total weekend business hours from Memorial Day to Labor Day. So we're talking less than 2% of their time for this race. I have made this comment assuming that the impact on these businesses is negative. However, I am sure that during race days and the training before and after, that either the athletes, the volunteers, or the spectators can account for some of the consumer buying that occurs in those businesses on those days. With this information, I truly ask that you please continue, as you have in the past, to support all the athletes, their families that support them, and TRIMON Productions, and allow Kathy Robbins to hold the Crab Man Triathlon in Mattoonik at South Kingstown Town Beach in July. Thank you.
My name is Tara Mulroy. I'm the owner of Tara's Family Pub in Mattoonik. I'd just like to mention a couple of things. As far as communication goes between myself and Kathy, there hasn't been any, except she did send me a marketing plan for my business so that I could actually, which, you know, I actually found insulting, to be honest with you. I've been in business quite a while down in Mattoonik, and I think all of us down there have worked very hard at what we do. I'm certainly not trying to stop any kind of racing at all. I do listen to my customers, and quite a few of them came in yesterday pretty upset about not being able to get down to us for breakfast, and there was another couple that couldn't actually get to Mass in the morning because somebody stopped them from going out of their street. Bob from the surf shop did get in contact with me and said that Kathy had been in contact with him, and we were trying to get a meeting. That's absolutely correct. Unfortunately, that didn't come about, and Bob is away at the moment. But I'm more than willing to meet with Kathy and with the rest of the business owners at any time. I did have some race people in yesterday. We counted them. We didn't stop them, but they all wanted to use the bathroom. There was 13 of them. And my sales were off by 40%, but that's a going thing when any of the races are on. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robert Potter. I live in Mattoonik on 135 Ocean Avenue. And we represent another component here, the people who live in Mattoonik. This area was never meant to have racism, because when they use, there's only one way in and out, and that's Mattoonik Beach Road. And that's closed. And even though they say this thing is over in two hours, they have a sign that says it's from 7:00 to 11:00 o'clock in the morning. I couldn't leave my street. It was blockaded with ambulance. Now, I don't understand what's going on here. I mean, obviously, the businesses are in trouble, but I see no reason why I should be compelled to stay in my house and have no access or egress from this area every time they have a race. I mean, this is a commercial business that they're running here. This is a profitable business, but why should I be inflicted with this thing? I mean, there are other places to run. They don't have to run here. The area is not conducive to a race when they close the roads. It's that simple. I have a friend, yes, that couldn't go to Mass last Sunday because they wouldn't let him out of his road. He lives on Prospect. Now, if that's no problem, I mean, someone has to explain to me what a problem is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Goodwin, and my family has owned property down in Mattoonik since 1933. And I have the unique perspective of being on both sides of this. I was trying, I did also encounter a traffic issue yesterday. I was trying to come down the road, and there's a line of cars on the right side, which slowly left one lane. There was two cars coming from one side, myself, and another car coming from behind. And obviously, that's not going to work. So we had to back up, get in somebody's driveway, so the other cars could come down. I proceeded down the road. And when I got there, I could not get into my driveway. But the reason I could not get into my driveway had nothing to do with the road race. It was because it was 10:45 and church was there, and I couldn't get into the driveway because the cars were blocked so close. Now, I don't want anybody to take this as anything about anti-church or complaining about the church traffic or anything of St. Romulus. My family has been a member of that church for 80 years, and I was an altar boy there 50 years ago, so this is not the point of this. The point is that when you live in that area, on that street or adjoining a couple of streets, you know that that's going to happen. You don't try to get in your driveway between 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock and 10:00 and 11:00 o'clock on Sunday, or 5:00 and 6:00 on Saturday afternoon in the summertime. You know it happens, so you plan around it. So that just came to me when somebody was mentioning getting to church. But I'm also an athlete and do a lot of races, not only the Crab Man and the Mattoonik races, but in South County and the tri-state area, Massachusetts, Connecticut. I go places and stay overnight in hotels to do the race the following morning, and I know that happens. And I was a volunteer at the race yesterday. And it was at the corner of Schoolhouse Road, the intersection of Schoolhouse Road and Moonstone Beach Road. And we stay there until the last athlete is by, for the safety of everyone. And the last athlete who came through was a woman who, if you said athlete, you would look at this woman and say, "That's not an athlete." She finished the race, and we're encouraging her, and at the end, I happened to see her, and I assume she was with a young gentleman that looked like he was 35 years old or so. And they were having a very emotional moment, and he was looking at her, I assume it was her son, with pride, and she was like beaming from ear to ear, and she had her, you know, stuff that they get from the race. But that woman now, and I just looked it up this afternoon, she was a 60-year-old woman from Grafton, Massachusetts, and she came down to South Kingstown for this race. And I know there's many other stories like this, not only with this race, but a lot of other ones, about the overall impact of these things.
Sir, could I ask you to wrap?
But anyhow, that's my story. So this woman from out of state, out of town and out of state, is going to forever remember a momentous moment in her life and associate it with the town of South Kingstown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how you doing? I'm David Tobin. I spoke to you here about this issue a couple of weeks ago, and I was here telling you how much I loved your town and the events, et cetera. I happened to do the Oceans Run the other day. This time, I'm not going to, I'm not here to tell you how much I enjoy being here. I'm here to tell you what, myself, and don't forget, there's 700 other people who will race here, who will take the same thing away. Last year, I purchased a bike here in this town at Stedman's for $3,500. Yet, Saturday, when I was in here, picking up my race numbers, I stopped in at Kamari's. I made purchase of over $150. I come down to Kamari's three times a year and buy sneakers at $145 bucks a pop every year. Now, I'm not just talking about me. I'm talking about 700 other people. I come down here and I train. I eat at Captain Jack's. I eat at Mattoonik Oyster Bar. Yes, there are other businesses right in that, but we're talking about the overall businesses in your town. I go to Denali's. I go to Starbucks. I stopped at Starbucks for coffee and today. I stopped at Starbucks for coffee and Saturday. Went over to Captain Jack's Sunday. All this is economic opportunity brought into your town, and I, there's 700 of us who come in here to race, just for the Oceans Run alone. But we also come in to train when we're not racing. We want, because we want to train on the courses where we are racing. That's when we're spending our money here in your town. When we come and we stay overnight so that we can race in your town, because I'm not from here, but I come down here to race. If you wish to have all that economic opportunity leave your town, that's up to you. But I think it's only detrimental to yourselves and your beautiful community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments on this license?
I'm Kevin Finnegan, Ocean Mist. From the workshop on, I think you guys said it loud and clear, you want the road race. You want to help everyone. We want to help everyone. I've been there as, you know, TRIMON said she came through the Rossi's to talk to me five years ago, whatever. I don't know. She needs to talk to people, like you keep saying. That's it. We love the road race. We have races ourself. We have canoe races. We have promotions galore, year-round. It's just come and talk to the community and make, if you haven't yet, like I said at the workshop, it's pretty odd. I'm pretty, I'm out in the boat all the time. I'm accessible. Bob Fox is accessible. Dan's in the store every day. We're there. Tara's there. We're there. Like, we're not, you know, you need to talk to us. So from the business community, you know, I've called the bike shops. I tell, I ride. I came from a two-hour ride today. We're not upset about runners or swimmers or cyclists or events. It's just the way it's been jammed down our throat for quite a while. And that's a good way to put it.
Kevin, do you think you could have this meeting in the next two weeks of the business?
It's not my business. It's not my job. I go to town council meetings. I got businesses. I go places. I got, you know, I will make, I don't want to be here right now. You know, I am here, you know, but it's a legitimate thing that we are not being talked to, and I scratch my head. I have no idea why. Everyone else has talked to me about it, except for the person that should talk to me about it. Not me specifically, because it's not my town or not my street or not my anything. And I actually caused more problems down there over the years as far as crowds and what have you. But I'm a nightclub in the middle of a neighborhood, and I don't have many, you know, like I do my best. Like, I talk to everyone, and I, 28 years, I'm worse than a road race. You know what I mean? Like, I'm more, you know, as far as all events. What you do is you go out there and you talk to people day in and day out, and you work it out. Like, I think I asked for 20, we got 22 employees that day, or 21, and just, they were stopped. They couldn't get to work. And they were told the road was closed by the volunteers, which is a mistake or not a mistake. They couldn't get to work. There's very few problems we have down there. If I was representing the business owners, which I'm not, but if I was, I listen to them, talk to them every day. Like, you know, I don't know how we're not accessible for how many years this has been going on, because it's, we've been humble and nice for a long time. We've, I'll lose two grand, three grand. I don't care. You know, if there's a Run for Carrier, or a Run for this, or a Run for that, it's not a money issue. It's not a money issue. I don't want to make, I don't want her to buy beer. I don't want, oh, you know, come in, fine. It's just, it's not a money issue. This has been kind of getting twisted. It's, someone needs to talk, just like I've talked for 28 years to everybody in this town to put a rock and roll club in the middle of a neighborhood. And I think, you know, you wash it out, make it work. Simple as that. So, thank you.
My name is Jason Siegel, Charleston resident, TRIMON volunteer, and I just want to make a point. The roads at no time were closed. I was working the roads, and we did our best to let people through. You know, yes, we had to make people wait. You know, it just wasn't safe. You know, we're working with the police. We had three cops at the intersection at the Sea View, and, yeah, we had to make people wait. And, you know, we talked to some Ocean Mist employees, and they weren't happy about it. They don't want to talk to us. That's fine. We smile, be nice. We let people through. You know, we didn't stop anybody, maybe for a minute, maybe for a few minutes. We had to stop people, you know, because of the traffic, but we let everybody through. I just want that to be known. Thank you.
My name is Peter DiStefano. I'm not here for this at all. I was just listening. I was here for something else. I'm an Ocean Mist guy, not a running guy. It's pretty obvious. I love the Ocean Mist. I spend all my time down there. I think as a business owner in this community, as a taxpayer in this community, what I've heard about this conversation, where we're trying to value five businesses to one, or some gentleman said someone came down from some part of Massachusetts, they may buy a house down here, and they want to remodel it, and that would work for me. So I'm just concerned about what your view is on what, how do you prioritize what business is more important than the other? That's what I wanted to speak about. I'm a little concerned about that, hearing that tonight.
My name is Fran O'Brien, and my wife and I own Tara's. That fellow's comment just made me think, I don't think any business is more important than the other business. I think the point of what the council has said and what we're trying to get, is there not a way to find common ground? And that's all we're trying to do. And the only way you do it is if you talk to each other. I know, my wife said to me, "Are you available for a meeting?" I said, "Sure, whatever." And I, "Just tell them you're in." And it didn't work, and I think that was legitimate and that was honest, but I don't think we should give up on finding common ground. Our businesses, individually or collectively, are not more important than hers, nor is hers more important than ours. Let's find middle ground and try to just make it work. That's all we've asked for. We don't want to stop racing. We just want to try to find common ground. Thank you.
Fran, if I may, while you're here, many of you are here, you, Kevin, Dan, maybe you can talk to Kathy and see if you can arrange a meeting in the next few weeks. I don't know when Mr. Fox will be back.
I don't either, but, yeah, I'm pretty much around whenever.
So maybe you guys could like meet in the hall and...
Sure, that works for me.
...up with a time and a place, and maybe we can get this thing rolling.
That sounds great. Thanks.
Hi, Jeff Robbins. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things, and Mrs. McIntee just made a good point. I'm just curious as to maybe a suggestion from the panel in terms of what you think that could come out of the meeting. Somebody made suggestion about coupons or things like that. If you guys have any suggestions, I would love to hear it as well.
Well, I think we made some suggestions. We did talk about, like, you know, having the people go to the businesses. I think Rachel was mentioning, instead of going to the Ratskeller, have the after-party at one of the local establishments if they're so willing. You know, maybe purchase some of the drinks or whatever you give to the runners from the Sea View Market. I mean, if you, you know, you give and take a little. If they're losing money because you're there, then maybe you can make up for that by, you know, sending people, sending business their way in an organized fashion, because it is their high season. This is when they make the most of their money, Saturdays, Sundays, and on the weekends in July. We're talking July.
Mm-hmm. And I think comparatively, it's the triathlon a high season for an ocean swim as well. So I don't want, I don't want to just say that it's their high season. I think it's everybody's high season.
Well, it is everybody's high season. So by, if they're losing business, and I know that there's been some talk, give them 10% off, that's not the time of year they need to give 10% off. These businesses can make top dollar in the summer, because that's when people are coming down there. So just promote them, you know, send the runners their way.
Maybe we could promote them on our website and things like that.
Yeah. I think that would help them.
Oh, I don't disagree with you at all. I just, if I could just bring up one picture. I'll start with that one. I don't want to confuse... I don't want to confuse, I don't want to confuse the Oceans Run and Run For Kerry and the Crab Man all in the same picture. I took that picture yesterday morning, the second after the last 5K ran by the Ocean Mist. So, and the cars are three-quarters of the way already to, they couldn't get any farther because of the snow. They're three-quarters of the way to the Vanilla Bean. So if people are talking about stopping traffic, we didn't stop any traffic, because obviously if it was jammed the second the race was over, they were getting through. And one of the volunteers made a point of saying that it could be a couple extra minutes, and I don't disagree with that at all. To take away every inconvenience is impossible. And just one other picture. That is, that picture that's going there is the side of Sea View, all the way down through the church. That is at, I believe that was at Five of Nine. So there were, there was an hour before church started that the road was completely clear. And I just, I wanted to make a point of-
Sir, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up soon.
Notification, I think, is huge. I think collaboration is huge. And I don't think, and I agree with Joe, that I don't necessarily think that, you know, the world is going to change if the, if the meeting happens. I would like to think that some collaboration happens. We're willing to do whatever we can. But to say, and let me just wrap up. If the course has changed, and this is what I started with, with confusing the races, if the course has changed and we do not enter the entire point, Tara's, Ocean Mist, the surf shop, anything, if we don't go anywhere near that with the new course, I'm curious as to the impact that it's going to have, a negative impact at all.
Thank you, sir.
If we're not going down there, I don't see an impact at all.
And I think those are actually the types of things you might tell-
Thank you.
...business owners when you meet with them.
Hi, my name is Jessica Gernan, and I'm a resident of Wakefield. And I don't have any part in a Matunik business or a Tri-Mom anything, I've just been listening and paying attention on Facebook and in the media. And I think possibly what's happening here is that the Matunik businesses have been pillaged the past few years that Tri-Mom has come through, and it's more than the money, it's the feeling that they swoop in and create a tornado and walk out, and they didn't go before they came and say, hey, like, how can we make this work? And now it might be too little, too late.
If that's all the comments that we're going to hear, are there any further comments from the council? Do I hear a motion on this?
It looks like Steve wants to say something. Are you ready to speak, Steve?
Steve, do you want to speak?
No, I was just going to say, I think it's time for a motion, whether it's a motion to approve, to reject, or to continue. You need to get something.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to make a motion to continue this for two weeks, and the condition of this motion is that Kathy from Tri-Mon Productions meets with the business owners in, in Matunik, if they're also willing, arrange, I think you're all, many of them are here, if you could arrange this meeting while you're all here and come up with a, a time and a place that works for everyone, and, and see what, what can come out of it. I mean, obviously, everyone's got to be willing, but I would suggest that as the, as the next move for Tri-Mon Productions. And, you know, if Kathy, if you don't want to talk to them, then have somebody else, there's enough people in your organization, it appears, that could work together to come up with a solution. And we'll hear it again in two weeks. So that's my motion, that's how I'm moving.
I second that motion.
So moved. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of continuing this for two weeks? If everything's aye.
Aye.
That is a unanimous vote. We'll see you in two weeks. And that brings us to item seven on our agenda, public hearings. I open the public hearing, which is a public hearing relative to an application by BWJW LLC, Principal Officer Bradley Wa and/or his assigns, 17 Edith Road Narragansett, requesting proposed text amendments to the zoning ordinance of the town of South Kingstown, Article Three, Section 301, schedule of use regulations, Use Code 33, outdoor recreation facility. New note referencing Section 501 supplementary use regulations. Article Five, Section 501 supplementary use regulations add new section 501.11, indoor gun range and outdoor clay shooting, including minimum sighting requirements, signage and retail sales allowances, and Appendix A, Use Code Descriptions, Use Code 33, outdoor recreation facility. Add indoor gun range as shown on Exhibit One attached to your agendas. Would the applicants please come forward? Hold on one second.
I'm going to reference the communication from the planning board. Communication dated January 14th, 2015, from the South Kingstown Planning Board, recommending the text amendments to the zoning ordinance as printed on the agenda, and incorporating consistencies, consistency with the comprehensive plan, and consistencies with the purposes of zoning.
And before we, we get into the, to the meat of this public hearing, I want to tell the audience that tonight we're considering changing our overall permitting of indoor gun ranges. So we're not talking about a specific project here. So we're going to keep commentary to the issue of creating this new designation within town.
President Collins, Attorney Mark Fay representing the petitioner here. That being the case, we did, for the benefit of the council members tonight, we did bring our architect, the action target individuals who are actually going to be constructing an indoor range, the individuals that are going to be constructing the heating and, constructing the heating and cooling in regard to environmental noise, they're all available. That being said, if you want us to limit it just to the general definitional use change, I'd be more than happy to do that, and I understand that this is one step, we have to go back to planning and get master plan. After master plan, I'm going back to zoning with my special use permit, and we can, we can do this at another time, but I just wanted to make the council aware, we had them available tonight for your benefit. But that would get into a lot of, much more than the definitional use change, it would get into the specifics of this particular range itself. So we're ready to do that tonight, we can do it tonight if you want, it's up to you, President, or we could just limit it, obviously, to the definitional use change right now, we can do that another time between zoning and when we come back here if we need to for licensing.
Well, my feeling is we've, we've been here a long time tonight already. I would say that the only thing that we can take action on tonight is, is changing that use. So let's keep our comments to that. I have a lot of faith in, in the project that I've seen. Mike, do you want to speak to that?
Abel, Steve's just suggesting that we just make, you've already mentioned that what we're here is for really an enabling ordinance, so that individuals who fit the definitions of the new subsection, the zoning ordinance, would have the ability, if you so adopted this, to go through a process. And as Mr. Fay has mentioned, that process would involve going to the planning board for development plan review, which would then make a recommendation to the zoning board in connection with a special use permit. That would be a, the hearing before the zoning board would be a public hearing, individuals within 200 feet of any proposed such indoor shooting range would receive notice, they'd know about it ahead of time, they'd get a description of who it was who was applying, what they were applying for. Once they get through those steps, assuming they get through those steps, they'd eventually have to come back to the council to actually obtain a license. And I believe, again, as you stated, that the appropriate time for the presentations on the specific shooting range would, would come up then, not at tonight's meeting.
I, I agree, and I think it would be good to speak to potentially how many properties within South Kingstown might be eligible for, for use under this. But, yeah, please.
And again, why don't we do that? I can address that a little, because this has been approximately a five or six-month process already before it got to the town council. A lot of the issues that I'm sure the council has questions about have already been raised in the outset when we report planning, before we got our unanimous decision of a recommendation. And we got to that specific issue, in regard to a proliferation of indoor gun ranges, we don't want that, the town doesn't want that. And one of the reasons we crafted the language we did that was recommended by planning was to specifically limit that. And in regard to the zone issue, okay, this is the R residential zone, R-
Forty.
Forty. I did meet with all your planning professionals on a number of occasions to find out, okay, when we're writing up the criteria, the specific limitations that are attached to the definitional use change, what would be the effect of that? And basically, I was consistently told that pretty much, well, I shouldn't say pretty much, the only site that really works with this change in language in those resident R40 zone is the one we're dealing with here. And like I said, your planning professionals are available to Dennis, and you can speak to them about that. But that, the purpose of the five-month process was to incorporate limitations, criteria that would prevent that from happening, and that's what we've done with this language.
Right. And Mike told us during the work session that when we make this, if we make this change, a time period of perhaps two months would, would elapse before we get to the final approval of this particular project that you're hoping for. Would you go through with that timeframe, do you think, applying?
Yeah, we would like to, obviously, move it along as quickly as possible, it's been eroded so far. But no, I agree with what your solicitor said, I, if we, if this language is approved today, the next step is going back to planning. We have to get master plan. We've already started that process initially. At that point, we'd bring all our civil engineers in, do what we need to do. Once we get the approval there, then we're going over to zoning, and then zoning would have to hear the special use permit. And then if that, by that time, if the license ordinance or comes down the road at some point, we would be back before the town council on the license issue. So I agree, it's going to be two months, hopefully two months, it might be more than two months.
I think for the benefit of the audience and people at home, if either Mike or you, Mark, would describe what this actually allows.
All right. Well, what this does is, and this was provided, I don't know if the council has it, but this was, you know, I have a copy of what was provided. We can make that available to everyone. I think this was already, this was the language that was advertised coming here tonight.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Thank you.
Everyone here in the audience has exhibited once counseling. Right. So if you can see, if you look at the exhibit, in the Use Code 33, the outdoor recreational facility, the language that existed before we recommended the change to allow the indoor gun range, it was specific to outdoor gun ranges, but not indoor gun ranges. I don't know why it was crafted that way, but that being said, we wanted to go forward in indoor gun range. So in order to limit where indoor gun range could be built, it was better to go back to the definitional use section within that code section. So this isn't a general zoning change provision throughout the town of South Kingstown, it's specific to what you already have on the books, and to these residential R40 zone. So what this is going to do is change the definition from outdoor to include indoor. But on top of including the language for an indoor gun facility, we specifically added the criteria that's listed, which, you know, minimum size, minimum setbacks, parking rules, maximum building coverage, maximum impervious lot coverage, retail use, and also putting in that all pre-existing regulatory rules would be in place to restrict even the indoor gun usage in this particular zone. And again, that's when I met with the planning professionals for the town to make sure that this language accomplished what we all wanted to do, and it does. So again, to, you know, to sway any concerns about the council or members in the town. This isn't a town-wise referendum for indoor gun ranges by no means. And again, it's my understanding, you can talk to the planning professionals, it really only fits in this one spot, which has been a beautiful outdoor sporting clay facility and outdoor gun range for a period of time for, I think, the past 100 years. Seventy years. And, and what we're trying to do is preserve that 125 acres of the way it is, and it's beautiful out there, keep the sporting clays going, which, which is working fine right now, eliminate any need for an outdoor gun range, build an indoor gun range, which is going to be, you know, obviously safer environmentally, much better, and sound-wise, obviously, we'll, we'll meet all the town ordinances in regard to sound, and I bet we even exceed those, all those standards.
Thank you. Questions?
Mark, why do you feel there's been 12 different parcels that appear to be eligible for this, you know, ordinance change? Why do you feel that none of them would apply?
Don't take it from me, take it from Dennis and your planning professionals, I'm not as familiar with, I did go through those 12 parcels, but I relied upon your planning professionals, because they're much more familiar. When you say when it would apply, well, one of the criteria is size.
Right. And that's how they all fit in.
But then if you go through those, as your planning professionals explained it to me, because of the use that's there now, or there's something else that would prevent it from becoming an indoor gun range. I think there were, of the 12, I think they said there were two that might fit all the criteria, and that might have been a turf farm. But, so unless someone wants to take that turf farm, and again, it would have to go through the special use permit anyways, even if it got to the point where that one lot possibly fit all the criteria, and then the owner sold it to someone who might say, I want to do this, it still has to go to the special use permit at that point. And then you take in all those conditions of the area around it, and come back to you guys for licensing, you will have some control. But Carol, to answer your question, again, I know there was 12, and again-
And you're one of them. So there's 11 outside of you.
All right, so 11. But of those 11, I think there was maybe one, possibly two, size-wise might fit, but from talking to your planning professionals, they didn't think it would ever be a situation where it would be, another gun range would be built there. And if, in the small chance someone wanted to do that, then it's still going to have to go through special use, and it's still-
Sure.
And it's going to have to come back to you guys. And at that point, part of that is, you know, having a gun range within, you know, you can decide that that's not appropriate for the use in that area.
Sure. How many indoor gun ranges are there in the state? Do you have any idea?
Bracket probably, I think, five or six.
Hi, my name is Bradwell, I'm the owner of the Peace Dale Shooting Preserve, and if we're talking public today, there is only one facility that's actually public, and that's called Midstate in Coventry, Rhode Island. There are several indoor gun ranges that are private, including some that are federally held, like at the Naval, Naval Underwater Weapons Center. By my count, there are a total of six. So if you include the public facility, there are seven. But the other six are privately held, and there's a long waiting list to get into some of those places that have memberships.
And yours would be public?
That is correct.
Well, Mike, one of my concerns with the ordinance is it's too broad, it allows for too many properties to fit within the ordinance, and I've expressed this to, you know, Mike Grisillo and Mr. Alfred, and I'm just saying that to you, I don't object to the specific project that I know that you're coming forward with, but I'm not happy with 12 possibilities of this. And maybe, maybe Vin should speak to that-
I think I did see Vin-
From planning.
-peeking his head up there in the back, if he wants to come and clarify.
Maybe you can clarify what Mr. Fay was just alluding to, as far as the 12 parcels.
Just maybe to back up a little bit, this application, you know, from the BWJW LLC was, was received by the town, and our review consisted of some meetings with staff initially, which Mr. Fay mentioned, and as well as the town's technical review committee considered this matter in November of last year, and subsequently, and the TRC did not have any objections to that, they, in fact, it was their consensus that these amendments, which were revised to some degree during the review process, where it would be a positive addition to the town zoning text. The planning board took this matter up at two meetings in December and also in January, and they had, you know, as the council, as the clerk had mentioned, and the council has received, have recommended favorable consideration of these general text amendments. Also, as noted by the solicitor- Also, as noted by the solicitor, that these really define a procedural enabling set of regulations for someone that met the criteria to come forward if they so chose, and then be subject to development plan review by the planning board, the formal consideration by the zoning board to review in the form of a special use permit, and thence licensing before the council if they, you know, were able to accomplish those regulatory procedures or hurdles, if you will. As part of the review, when, you know, we should, maybe it's worth stating that in summary, what these, there's three things these amendments do. They would amend existing Use Code outdoor recreation facility to add indoor shooting ranges part of that. There would be notes added to Section 301 of the zoning, which is a schedule of use regulations, would reference a new Section 501.11, which is, would establish minimum standards for the indoor shooting range. And that's under supplemental use regulations that exist currently. The summary of the limiting criteria would be a minimum lot size of one hundred and twenty acres, minimum building setback of three hundred feet from all property lines, minimum parking area of one space for every four hundred square feet of total gross floor area, maximum building lot coverage of two percent of the lot area, maximum impervious lot coverage of four percent of the lot area, and that retail sales of guns and ammo would be in accessory use, that would be prohibited without an indoor gun range. As part of that review, we did a screening analysis using the, using those, well, those criteria, particularly the one hundred and twenty acres, of properties in the town that may fit those, the criteria generally, and that weren't encumbered by conservation restrictions or other means, that other limits that would prevent it from even being considered. So we put together a universe of the conceivable under the, and there were twelve parcels. You know, and just in very brief terms, there's the parcel that the applicants own, there's also a parcel that's owned by the university up off Plains Road, there's a turf farm off South County Trail, there's a parcel on Broad Rock Road, that's a residential vacant land that has a considerable amount of wetlands present on it, there's a parcel off Wolf Rock Road that straddles into, that's also, I think there's a home site on that, but it's largely woodland, there's a golf course, there's another turf farm, there's a property owned by the Boy Scouts that runs Camp Aquapod, there's a residential property off, that's vacant, that's under the farm forest, an open space area off Post Road, down on the south side of Post Road, there's a Warden's Pond Campground, Tucker Town Village, which is a manufactured home community, which is, I would say, that's built out, that's not going to go to another use. And there's a parcel owned by South County Sand and Gravel, that's approved for manufactured homes and a nine-hole golf course, and that's, has all the approvals in place, and recent communications indicate that that's likely to go forward in some form or fashion in the relatively near future. So that was our review analysis, and, you know, also, we discussed about, you know, what the market may limit. Mr. Wa indicated there's a relatively few of these facilities in the state at present, but I would, in my opinion, be, I don't think you'd see an unlimited number of them. I just don't think either the regulations or the inclinations of owners or the market would probably have some kind of limiting factor in terms of what may come forward at some future time.
So what are the two properties, Vin, that would be the possibility that Mr. Fay was talking about?
Well, there's two properties that are residentially zoned, that are either vacant or largely vacant, that, you know, are held by local property owners, and, I mean, they may have, I mean, the zoning ordinance has eligibility criteria for lots of different things, and whether they come forward or not would be an individual decision by property owners.
So you're confident this isn't going to open the door to the possibility of twelve indoor gun ranges in South Kingston?
Well, I'm quite confident that you would never see twelve of these ranges on those pro, I mean, I don't think.
I know that's very unlikely, but, you know.
Right. I can speak to that, too.
Sure.
This is a major financial investment by Mr. Wa and his group. I mean, probably an exit, you know, four, six million dollars. And understanding, too, even with those two possible lots, you can make a lot more money on this property doing a subdivision. And we could, this is a perfect spot for forty-five to seventy-five homes out there. Now, Mr. Wa and his company, they don't want, he doesn't want to do that. He wants to keep the land. He likes the way it is. He wants to develop it for outside sportsmanship, that type of thing. Those other parcels are going to have inherent value, probably above what makes sense to use it for an indoor gun range. I mean, I'm just saying, in regard to the market values, that's what I'm saying, with the, maybe there's only two left, but I can't believe that even those two would be used for that purpose at any time in the future. I don't think it financially would make sense for the owners of the land.
I mean, it's unfortunate we couldn't just, you know, approve this project, but that's called spot zoning, so we can't do that. And we already know that that's not a legal way to go about this. The other question I had was the retail use, and I think, I don't know which one can answer that one. Any retail components shall be accessory to the principal indoor gun range and shall not be permitted without any, without said principal land use being actually in place. So obviously, you have to have the building in place before you can even have the gun shop.
The reason we did that was because we didn't want someone to be able to use this language to get a firearms license to sell guns and ammunition. By doing this, obviously, with an indoor gun range, they're going to be renting firearms, selling ammunition so you can shoot inside the range. What we didn't want to happen in this area was a proliferation of gun shops.
Right.
So unless you build your indoor gun range, you don't get the accessory use of being able to sell the firearms and the ammunition. So that was the thinking behind that language, because we didn't want to open up the town to a situation where you, just like, we don't want twelve indoor gun ranges, we don't want twelve firearms. With this language, that can't happen unless you build your indoor gun range.
And is that, so would it be like a typical gun shop where you could sell or lease any firearm that's legally possible, I guess?
Any legal firearm, yes. But again, we don't have it here, but again, this, when you call this a typical, I think this isn't going to be a typical, this is a little higher end, what we're planning on doing with this, the retail part and the facility, which, you know, we had it available tonight, we're not going to get into it, but this is really more of a club atmosphere than a typical concrete, I don't want to call it a blue collar, because we will have blue collar shooters, but we're also going to have white collar shooters, you know.
And I just have another question probably for Mr. Wa. How do you, do you check everyone's license when they come in? If they have a license to carry a concealable weapon, or do you check all of this when they come in to shoot in the range?
Well, that depends. So if they're coming into the gun range.
Do they have their own weapon? Because some of them do, right? I mean, I've never been to one, and I'm sorry, everybody, that I'm so green, but.
It's quite all right. And actually, Sven's probably better at, the general manager of the facility is my nephew here, Sven Soderberg, who is actually, he and my son run it on a daily basis. So I'd like to actually shift it over to him, so.
I'm just wondering what kind of regulations you have in place by running the indoor gun range and how you police your own situation.
Right. So there's, there are many situations that could come up as far as people bringing their own firearm, people renting firearms. Everyone would be required to complete a safety and orientation course. Actually, one thing we're looking at implementing that's new would be if you come in, it's your first time there, you have a separate identification showing that range safety officers will need to pay special attention to you and kind of make sure you're being safe and operating in a safe manner. As far as tracking licenses, you know, that would be done during the safety orientation process, in which case, once that's completed, you'll get a card identifying that you've completed that and passed those requirements.
And that card is a photo ID that we would produce at the facility. So when they come back in a second time, Carol, they'll have that ID with them.
Do you have to do a background check, like a BCI check?
Not if they're, if they're coming to the range for the purposes of renting and shooting, or if they have their own gun with them, no, we do not have to do that. If they're buying a gun, yes, we do have to do a background check on them.
Yeah, so if you're purchasing a firearm, you would go through the normal, local and federal background checks. And you would still definitely be held to, you know, Rhode Island's seven-day, seven-day waiting period.
So there's no chance of somebody coming in with an illegal firearm and just showing up at your door and saying, I want to do some target practice?
I mean, the logistics of us actually checking, you know, that their personal firearm is illegally owned firearm would pretty much be impossible for us without having a direct branch of the FBI at our building. That being said, why they would choose to come there, I don't know.
I have no idea.
Thanks. And I think we're getting a little bit into the specifics of the particular project.
I think it's impossible to avoid, quite frankly, because the reason we're here is because of the applicant and one thing I would like to, if I could.
I would like to say, I think it's commendable that you have reached out and talked to all the neighbors and the community around you, and they're very for this, and you have their backing, which I know, you know, is important, so, good for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for the, that's from the council? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
I just have one more. And I know, Mark, you mentioned it, the fact that we're putting.
One last question from an attorney.
I know. We're putting indoor gun range underneath outdoor recreation facility. I mean, it just doesn't seem logical.
No, honestly, the way it was written wasn't written really logically, but, you know, there are some outdoor facilities, I could make the argument that it was already allowed under that, because there's some outdoor facilities that have a indoor component, you know, like horse rack riding or something like that would be considered an outdoor facility, but it may partially might be indoor also.
So indoor would be the barn, is that?
Or you could ride, you could ride in the barn, you know what I mean? You could ride in the barn even though it's an outdoor facility. It's the same thing with the indoor gun range. It seems kind of silly that they would put language in there that would allow an outdoor gun range without the prospect of having an indoor gun range, which is safer, you know. And so, again, in order to avoid the problem of doing a general zone change that could affect the entire town, which we didn't want to do, we know you guys didn't want that, I felt legally that this was the best way to attain the goals that everybody wanted in this case, and, you know, planning agreed with me. That's why we got the recommendation.
As you said earlier, compromise, and I think that was the best way for us to get to, from point A to point B, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We look forward to seeing the final plans when they get there, if we get there. At this time, we take comments from the public. The issue of creating this new use within town zoning, so this is not about the particular project at the Peasdale Shooting Range, so come up, state your name.
Good evening. My name is Steve Hogan. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Rhode Island Revolver and Rifle Association. We've been in existence, this will be our seventy-ninth year in the state of Rhode Island. One of the things that you're forgetting is that the legislature has seen fit to protect existing ranges. And I just have a couple of the small things here. Eleven forty-seven fifty-four, which is the licensing of shooting galleries. And one of the things that, the very last sentence that says, "Provided that the provisions of this section shall not apply to organizations that receive arms and ammunition from the United States or this state." What that means is an organization called the CMP, Civilian Mocksmanship Program. Many of the existing clubs in the state belong to that. They received arm and ammunition from the government through that program. Also, DEM, with their hunter safety courses, DEM being the state, they provide ammunition for hunter safety courses. So therefore, that would exempt these other clubs from some of the provisions that you have, where it says the ordinance is applicable to all shooting range facilities in the town. The other one is, there's immunity from prosecution, criminal or civil, and that's eleven forty-seven sixty-two. What that states is that people will be exempt, that no court shall enjoin or use or operation of a range on the basis of noise or noise pollution, provided the owner continues to be in compliance with any noise control, ordinance, or bylaws in effect at the time of the construction of the range. Some of these ranges have been in existence for sixty, seventy years, just like this building. You can't expect somebody to have to upgrade to today's standards that has been in existence for that long. Because, to tell you the truth, this building, I'm an electrician in the state of Rhode Island, this building right here is not in compliance with some things. I don't see a strobe light in this room, things like that, for a firearm system. So you have to take that into consideration, just like as if every household had to come up to the new code, electrical code, which was just enacted in November, the twenty-fourteen code. It would be impossible to rip out all the old wiring and things like that and have them come up to code. So just keep in mind that it would be nice if you exempt some of the older gun ranges that have been in existence for so many years. Thank you very much.
I think this is only a town-wide ordinance.
This is the zoning ordinance, so I'm not sure that applied, but.
I didn't, I specifically didn't address the licensing issue yet. I know that that's separate. I think the gentleman was addressing the licensing issue, and I haven't said a word about that, maybe we'll talk about that later.
Good evening. Jill of Olsie in South Kingston. I only saw this tonight, I've heard about the hearings and everything, but I only read the exhibit tonight just before I came down, and I think if the council for the, I like the idea of the applicant, applicant myself, having indoor range, but, for that project. But as far as this Exhibit One goes, council for the applicant, if they're trying to be exclusive, I think they're very successful, and I don't think that's fair. I don't, I haven't studied the consequences of, you know, of indoor ranges in particular areas of towns, but I do know that, you know, there are a few around the state, one in what, the Newport Rifle Club in Middletown. I don't know if that ordinance, they must have an ordinance governing that, so I don't know if that was looked at as source of information for what we have here, but.
Just, I think this ordinance was patterned off of one that exists in Tiverton. Is that right, Mike?
We had, we're still on the zoning ordinance, of course, and some of the particulars in the zoning office, ordinance did in fact come from Tiverton, but it's pretty broad in general.
Well, one of the, a couple of things here, though, if I could just point out, for instance, what about the one hundred and twenty acres? And I don't understand why that such a large piece of land is necessary for this sort of thing, since it's an indoor and it's being run properly, it would be a safe, a safe business. And it's that kind of thing that I don't understand, it just seems unnecessarily exclusionary. The parking that you mentioned in 501.11C, is that used, is that, did that come about from a general formula? Or is that specific to the attempt to be exclusive in curtailing anyone who might want to enter into this sort of business in town? The maximum impervious lot coverage, what's the source of the four percent maximum for maximum impervious lot coverage? Because why can't they use dry wells or retention ponds or things like that, of that nature, to sequester any stormwater if that is indeed the concern, stormwater? But, or is it, again, just a way to be exclusionary in the number of people that might be interested in pursuing this sort of business in town? And I can't imagine there being a lot of people that would enter in this sort of business, but 501.11D, structures shall not exceed two percent of the total acreage, that's, that's ridiculous. I don't understand, again, how that can be arrived at, because it is so limiting with anyone who might want to enter into this business, this sort of business. So, you know, if, again, if the council brought up or drew up this ordinance with the idea of excluding, they were, they were right on the money. I know, to me, this is not the. I know, to me, this is not the kind of, this is not the way to write an ordinance when you're trying to affect business in town. So I would, I would hope that you would consider some of my comments and take a look at it, and not put this modification into the ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ray Bradley. I am from Charlestown, but I grew up in Wakefield area for the past, quite a few years. I've been in competition shooting for over 40 years, and there are 12 indoor ranges in the state of Rhode Island that I know of, that I've shot at, and there's one public range. I think the best idea is to go look at those ranges, see what it's like, and get a better perspective of it. That's just a suggestion as a instructor. I'm also a federal firearms dealer, and those are just some suggestions for me, for the indoor ranges. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peter DeBolt. I live in Wakefield. I'm a member of the Newport Rifle Club, I'm also a member of the NRA, which is required. I'm also a veteran of the United States Navy, and I lived here for 21 years. I first heard about the proposed ordinance tonight, and the last two gentlemen said, I can definitely back them up on that, these provisions are too restrictive. The first thing I thought of when I read those was that, when I first bought my very first gun here in town, a Universal, we went to the basement to try it out. If these restrictions were like, "Oh, no, we don't want to have people shoot in the basement," then I could leave the store with a gun that doesn't work. So I would go back and make sure that the existing ones aren't affected, because we spent a long time talking about how we're affecting businesses we have right now. And also, I like the part about getting together with business owners and coming to a meeting. I invite anyone here to come with me to Newport Rifle Club, to see how those work, and we said we're using the same language for law that we have in Tiverton. That is, that was passed just so no one would build a rifle range there. If you're looking for a model, try Newport, they have, or Middletown, Newport Rifle Club. They have, they're having their own issues now with their neighbors, but they've run it successfully for many, many years now, if you're looking for a model to copy. Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments from the public? Further comments or questions on the council? All right, well, then I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Mike, are we doing Exhibit 1 and 2?
Yeah, I might be able to help with this, if that's where you want to go, is a motion to approve, that I'd recommend the motion state that, yes, I know it's just from Section 1, but I think what we should do is this, that the motion be to approve the amendments to the zoning ordinance as set forth in Exhibit 1 to tonight's agenda, which specifically pertained to Article 3, Section 301, Article 5, Section 501, in Appendix A, Use Code Description, Use Code 33. So that's the motion to actually approve what's in front of you, and that you will do so by also finding that the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and consistent with the purposes of zoning, all as set forth in the Planning Board recommendation to you dated January 14, 2015, and that you adopt all of the rationale in that particular memo to you as part of your motion. I think Dale has all that, so if someone moves it, you get a second, then you can have discussion.
So moved.
Second.
So moved. All right, any discussion on this motion?
I just want to say that after listening to Mr. Fay and Mr. Wa and your nephew, Vin, I think that you've answered a lot of the questions. I'm going to rely on Vin, that this is, the 12 possible parcels out of all of those is really only the one that we're talking about, the old Frisella property and Mr. Wa's property, and maybe two others, so I would like to limit it more. I know that is not what the last two gentlemen came up and said, but I would like to be very exclusionary on this, but I'm going to rely on what I've heard tonight, and that's why it's always good to show up and say what you think. So I'm going to vote in favor of the ordinance with what I heard tonight from the different parties.
All right. Any other comments? All right, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is a unanimous approval. Congratulations. That brings us to Item B, within public hearings, a public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the Town Code, Chapter 9 licenses and miscellaneous business regulations that would establish a new section entitled Article 6, Indoor Shooting Ranges, as shown on Exhibit 2 attached heretofore. So I open this public hearing. Hi, everybody.
Go first.
Can wait for the crowd to clear.
Yeah, I'm going to wait until this clears out a little.
All right, Mr. Fay.
Thank you, President Collins, Town Council members. This resolution, obviously, the ordinance for the licensing step, unfortunately, no blame to Mr. Orsillo at his office, but I only received this text and the language recently. I would ask for a continuance from this board, so I can have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Orsillo to work out some, I mean, some of the things jump out on the paper for me that I think I need to discuss with your attorney. So, again, we're not coming back here tomorrow or two weeks to, you know, open up this gun range, seeking a license, but I think it would be beneficial to everyone. We have some representatives from the NRA here, we have some representatives from some of the other gun clubs who obviously had some issues with the ordinance in regard to the licensing. Maybe we can shortchange a lot of that by just taking some time, so I can meet with Mr. Orsillo, and we can go through this, and maybe try to work out some language that might be acceptable to all the affected parties and the town of South Kingston.
Mr. Fay did speak to me prior to the meeting. He indicated that he would like to have the opportunity to sit down with council, rather than debate all these issues here in front of the council tonight, because it may be some of his proposals actually make some sense. And as you know from the prior hearing, it's a minimum two-month process before any applicant could come before you for a license, so if we were to continue this for a couple of weeks to the March 23 meeting, I don't think there's any issue with someone trying to come in and apply for a license in the meantime, and it might make things a lot smoother. I'm not saying we're going to come back here and everyone's going to be in agreement, but maybe some of the issues can be resolved before we get to you.
Does a continuance of two weeks make sense, Steve? Do we need to do advertising?
Oh, no, you can, if you continue this tonight, you don't have to do the advertising.
I just want to say one thing. There's a couple of them that I don't really, I'm not familiar with, like Section 9-124, so when you're looking into it, minimum design requirements, it says, "Design Standards Specified by the 2012 Edition of the NRA Range Source Book." That means nothing to me, you know, I mean, we'd have to, give us a little idea what that is.
Understanding, well, we have...
And I think it's in the next section, too.
Yeah, it's all, it's all over the place over there, you know, and Carol, that's why we have the guys from MASH and Target here, and this is what we're going back to planning for in regard to the building permits and master plan, and this is, we'll be presenting all this when we get back to planning, but I can tell you right now, from what I've talked to my experts, that our, all our standards are higher than what is contained. And understanding, too, the NRA, the 2012, it specifically says in those guidelines, they're guidelines, they're not meant to be the Bible of standards. The NRA specifically said this shouldn't prevent anyone from building an indoor gun range, but they're guidelines. And I can tell you right now, from speaking with my experts, my architects here, in regard to safety, noise, environment, we have our environmental expert here tonight, too, they'll be, you know, back, obviously, before planning, it's going to exceed everything you have on here. And again, that's one of the issues I want to talk to Mr. Orsillo about. Some of these issues are getting into regulation side of things that are going to be addressed anyways. I'd like to focus more on the licensing, even though my position is you don't have to license this. I understand you might want to, but I take it, it's not state mandated, it's not, not those, those statutes are just mechanisms to find gun ranges that don't have a town license. All the 12 indoor ranges that we've talked about tonight have been operating for years, with the exception of Tiverton, they're, none of those towns are licensed.
But we don't want to start a precedent here that we can't...
No, 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 I understand...
We want to continue with the licensing.
No, it's just...
Mr. Fay is not opposed to the council adopting a licensing ordinance. He does have some issues with the way some of this is worded, and I'm more than happy to meet with him prior to March 23 to listen to what he has to say.
And I'd also like to hear from Chief Vespi around the safety issues, and any, any input from you, chief, would be great.
That's fine.
All right, then.
I'll make a motion to continue Agenda Item under Public Hearing 7B for two weeks.
Second.
So moved, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous. See you in two weeks. That brings us to number 8 on the agenda, Communications. 8A is Communication Received February 23, 2015, from Helen F. Allen concerning the observance of Washington's birthday. It's been received, placed on file. What do we want to do with this?
We discussed this at the work session, and we have agreed with Helen Allen to observe Washington's birthday on February 23 of each and every year. That's the motion. 22nd.
It says 23rd.
That was when we received it.
Oh, February 22nd, sorry.
All right, so moved, discussion on this.
Happy birthday, George.
Yes, happy birthday to President Washington. Obviously, he came through our community 250-plus years ago, and something to commemorate by recognizing his birthday.
I will let the ladies auxiliary know, and maybe next February 22, they would be happy to lay a wreath for President Washington.
Very nice.
Great. So we vote to approve that, correct? All in, did we, that was a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Item B, Communication Received February 27, 2015, from Jeffrey M. Willis, Deputy Director of Coastal Resources Management Council, requesting confirmation of the appointment of an alternate CRMC Subcommittee Member to act as the town's representative in contested matters. It's received, placed on file. What are we going to do with this one?
We discussed this also at the work session, and Vin Murray has been the alternate Committee Member, and I move that we reappoint Vin Murray to that position.
Second.
So moved, all in favor of reappointing Vin Murray to this position?
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous. Congratulations, Vin. Number 9 on our agenda is Comments from Interested Citizens. Is there anyone out there who wants to talk to us tonight? All right, any comments from the council?
I just want to say, I know there were a few events this past weekend that we were able to attend. Carol and I were both at the Easter Seals Event this past Saturday, which was a great event for a great cause. There was also the same night, a comedy night for the firefighters, so, you know, the volunteer firefighters had a great event as well, and it was a great weekend.
Any other comments? All right, now to the Town Manager's Report.
Couple of items I wanted to reference tonight. One is that Wednesday evening at 7:00, we've got the Fourth Budget Work Session, and that will be with the Full School Committee for a review of the school budget and the budget transfer to the school department. Secondly, I wanted to mention that I provided council with copies of letters that I have forwarded to the State Department of Transportation from the director to the design section, to the maintenance section, specifically related to the existing condition on High Street. I have indicated to each of, in each letter, that the conditions are unacceptable and that they pose a clear and present danger to public safety. I've indicated that there's a need for immediate action on the state's part to bring that road to some type of passable condition. The letters also have asked to get a specific schedule for construction of the reconstruction of that entire road. As the council's aware, going all the way back to May of 2013, we had a public hearing with DOT for the neighborhood on the improvements, which include everything from the removal and reconstruction of the road, as well as reconstruction of all sidewalks within the right-of-way, and to improve all drainage. Those plans have been completed for at least a year, save the requirements for meeting wetlands alteration requirements associated with drainage. Those need to move forward, or we will never get that road reconstructed. It's not just a public safety hazard, it's also a disadvantage to our business community since it serves as one of the major roads for access to and from our Peacedale Business District and our Main Street Business District. I have heard back from DOT today, we will be meeting with the design individuals within the next two weeks. My objective there would be to try to get a workable schedule. But I caution, interim improvements are going to be necessary before full reconstruction is possible. Just to go through the environmental requirements with DEM and DOT, if there's agreement, will take them several months. If we're successful, bidding could be as late as this fall, but construction would never start until this time next year with the opening of construction season. That's a best-case scenario. That would be our objective, to get that type of a schedule in place. However, we also would have to try to get some definition to what improvements would be made to get us through one additional winter. So I want to clear, the town has taken the steps that are necessary at this point. I'm disappointed that we had to take the action that we have, but those road conditions can't continue the way they are. filling, and we will continue that as we go forward. It was a damaging winter. We have some roads, such as Ministerial Road, again, a state highway, that is in deplorable condition at this point based on heaves. And that's going to not subside until we get into some warm weather and the thaw. We've seen the thaw, the ground freeze is as much as three and a half feet in some areas. This is something we don't normally see with that deep of a freeze. We've got water lines that have been frozen in the South Shore system, which are below grade at four feet. So, you know, we're expecting that the frost heaves will solve some of their own problems as weight of vehicles goes over it, but the pothole filling is going to be an aggressive activity, probably over the next four to six weeks.
There's a sizable one on Broad Rock between the Broad Rock School and Sawgetucket. Everybody's going around it, so it's almost like one lane. I don't know if you've noticed it yet.
One thing I've learned in the last week is everybody has their own favorite pothole.
Yeah, that's right. I'm just telling you.
We'll just add that one to the list.
Steve, I'm just curious if there's any thought to put signage about the potholes, because if somebody were to be driving down High Street unfamiliar with the street, you really, it's a problem.
The problem we're running into is with the water cover on them, we can't, people can't see them at all. If we, one of the, one of the solutions is putting barrels. The problem with the barrels is it requires people to go across the yellow line.
Right.
So it's a battle at this point. We can't tell DOT how to maintain the road, we can only look to get them to make necessary improvements. And certainly, you know, as Carol said, we have a lot of town roads, it's not just state roads that are, have got difficulty, I mean, and it's not just South Kingston, but it's going to take a concerted effort this year based on the amount of damage that has been done. It's also going to mean that a lot of crack sealing is going to be warranted that, to deal with the cracks that have occurred because of the frost heaves itself. But it's something Public Works recognizes what the responsibilities are at this point, and will continue to try to deal with them. High Street, it's, it's an ongoing operation as to what we can do. There's also broken curves at the end of the intersecting roads that are dangerous, that need to be addressed because somebody could actually fall into those, those basins, or at least get, break a leg with those. That's caused based on heavy truck traffic coming from the intersecting roads, but it's something that has to be resolved with the reconstruction of that highway.
Right.
Well, make sure you have the meeting with the state here, so they drive down High Street.
Carol, we're looking to cooperate.
And collaborate.
And collaborate, too.
Question, any questions? I have them. I think we kept you busy enough tonight.
All right, then. Number 12 on our agenda is Appointments, and we heard applicant or two this evening. Do we want to make an appointment tonight?
I'd like to appoint Joanne Esposito to the Economic Development Committee, so I will move her appointment forward.
I will second it. When is the expiration on that?
March 16.
Well, that's right, so that would be a three-year term, but no, it would only be a one-year term, right? Well, there's two different, there's two vacancies. So she could do the one to March 2018, right?
On EDC?
Yeah, there's two vacancies.
So.
So that.
It's two vacancies, one expires in March 216 and one expires in March 21.
So I would move to appoint her until March 2018.
I see.
So moved, all in, or any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you for stepping up for that position. We're lucky to have you.
And number 13, our, our agenda is New Business. Oh, no, we did that, we did that.
We did. Do we have anybody else? There's nobody else in there?
Historic District.
Want to do the appointment of Carolyn to the Historic District?
There's two vacancies on that also.
And there's only one applicant.
You want to make that?
She was Conservation, but I don't know what the term is.
Carolyn Griswold to the Historic District.
Is there anybody?
Historic, I thought it was Conservation, because it was.
She wanted Conservation or Historic, but Conservation was the one she really wanted.
But there's no one.
I think Historic was open.
There's no looking at Conservation.
Right.
Is anybody coming up? Dale, is there anybody coming up?
Yeah, I think she had said Historic, because they.
Okay, since it's such a short term, I make a recommendation that we appoint Carolyn Griswold to the Historic District Commission for a term that will expire in December 2017.
I'll second that.
So moved. Any discussion?
It's 2015.
I think there's two applicants.
There's two, there's one for 15.
I've got a 14 and a 15.
An old one, it's 15 and 17.
Great, awesome.
So the motion is for 2017, and that is available. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. We'll let Carolyn know. Okay, now moving on to 13E, which is a resolution authorizing an amendment to a contract originally awarded on April 26, 1999, and amended on March 26, 2007, February 22, 2010, and March 11, 2013, to Geological Field Services, 156 Tremont Street, Melrose, Massachusetts, for landfill gas consulting engineering services from an amount not to exceed $30,000 to an amount not to exceed $35,000. And as further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated March 2, 2015, and entitled Rosehill Landfill Methane Monitoring Consulting Engineering Contract Amendment.
Requested the council's approval as presented. As noted in the pre-session, we've had a contract with GFS since 1999. Every three years or so, we're spending about $5,000 on the monitoring. We've had excellent results with this company. They're familiar with the two property owners, and we get complete reports on an annual basis. That satisfies both DEM and EPA. I'd ask council to continue to approve extensions of the contract and expansions of the value of the contract.
Motion to approve Agenda Item 13E.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion on this item?
I just want to ask, Steve, we constantly test these two homes.
That's correct. It's a requirement of, of the EPA consent agreement that we have for the Superfund. There's two homes that have been impacted by methane, and when we put the cover on that landfill, the amount of methane continued, it stopped from going through the, through the cover, so it, it follows the path of least resistance and goes to, goes close to the two homes that are closest to the landfill. So we continue to monitor that to ensure that there's no public safety hazard within the basements of those homes.
And so far, so good?
I'm sorry?
So far, so good, there's no safety hazard in there?
No, I mean, we will see periodic increases in the methane that's detected there. Some of them may be false positive, some of them may be that there's other activities occurring in the basement, but we're not seeing anything that jeopardizes the safety of those homes.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion. All in favor of approving Item 13E, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, and that is the end of tonight's agenda. I would.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned at 9:57.